And you are live.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, May 10, 2021, Dublin City Council meeting. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Emerald Groome.
Here.
Vice Mayor De Rosa.
Here.
Mr. Keeler.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Reiner.
Here.
Great. And Ms. Fox and Ms. Lugo are both traveling and are unable to join us this evening. So wish them well on their time. Much deserved time away. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject to pending or imminent court action. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor De Rosa.
Yes.
Mayor Emerald Groome.
Yes.
And Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Great. We will resume on this platform at seven o'clock. Thank you.
Okay, Maria. As though we have everyone, are we ready to resume?
Yes, we are.
We are.
And you are live.
So much. A good evening. We will reconvene the Monday, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-one Dublin City Council meeting. Given the current pandemic conditions, we are permitted by the state legislature to continue conduct public meetings virtually and maintain the safety accounts of all council, city staff, and certainly our residents. You can access the live stream on the city's website or on YouTube. In order to submit any questions or comments during the meeting, please use this form under the streaming video on the city's website. These questions and comments will be relayed to City Council by our communications and public information staff during the meeting. We certainly want to accommodate any public participation to the greatest extent possible. I'll be welcoming your comments on public business and ask that you refrain from making inappropriate comments, and certainly, as always, your patience is greatly appreciated. With that, I'd like to ask Homer Rogers, could please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Homer. Okay, we have a very special presentation this evening and proclamation. We're light Ohio blue. And I believe that Lieutenant Tabernak might be here with us this evening. Having trouble seeing everyone on my screen.
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Ah, there he is. Welcome. Thanks for joining us, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
I have a proclamation I'm going to read here for our PD to accept, and then hopefully we'll have a few comments from you as well. So, National Peace Officers Memorial Day will be observed in Dublin and across the nation with flags flown at half-staff on May fifteenth, to honor fallen police officers and to show support to those officers currently serving and their families. And whereas on October first, nineteen sixty-one, Congress asked President John F. Kennedy to designate May fifteenth as a day to honor law enforcement officers with it being observed during National Police Week, May ninth through the sixteenth this year. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency and officers who protect life and property against violence and disorder. And whereas to honor those we serve, Dublin businesses and residents are encouraged to show their respect to those officers who have paid the ultimate price, to their families and to all police officers going by going blue, by placing a blue light bulb in their porch light, garage lights, or a window, by putting a blue ribbon on their mailbox or tree throughout the week. And whereas light Ohio blue is a coordinated effort which the city of Dublin will observe by lighting City Hall, Dublin Community Recreation Center, Justice Center, and the Dublin Link Bridge blue this year. Now therefore, I, Chris Ambrose Grooms, Mayor of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May ninth to the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, as Light Dublin Blue Week in the city of Dublin, and call upon all businesses and citizens of Dublin to go blue this week and display their flags at half-staff on May fifteenth. Signed this tenth day of May, two thousand and twenty-one. I think this is probably the only week of the year that we will ever say go blue. But but we will today, and I have my bluest blazer on in honor of light Ohio blue. So, thank you, Lieutenant Tabernak. I know you were part of the organizational body that put together the ceremony on Friday, which was lovely. I know John and Kathy both joined me there and really appreciated the ceremony that you put together. So you have some some things you'd like to share with us?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that great intro and also for your kind words on Friday. It was very moving, and we really appreciate it. Good evening, members of council. Thanks for allowing me to say a few words and follow up to that. First and foremost, I'd like to say that it's truly been an honor to work for such a supportive and professional and forward-thinking city for the last sixteen years. So that's just a personal thing for me. At a time when policing remains under such intense, such an intense microscope, the members of our department continue to feel very fortunate to work for citizens and city leadership who appreciate and support our continued efforts to to serve everyone in Dublin. We have some of the most professional and committed police officers and public safety employees working right here at the Dublin Police Department, and we look forward to the opportunity to continue to serve and provide that public safety and partnership with our community. As the mayor talked about with light Ohio blue, Dublin Police Department will be participating in that again this year, and we ask our community members to to support us in that endeavor and then to support our city leadership in that endeavor. On May seventh, last Friday, we hosted our annual police memorial service to pay tribute to the sacrifice of central Ohio law enforcement who were killed in the line of duty, who were killed while performing their duties. Because of the pandemic, the ceremony was recorded, and it will be shared online with the public via social media on May fifteenth, which is this Saturday. During two thousand and twenty, there were three hundred and sixty-two line-of-duty deaths involving law enforcement officers nationwide, four of whom died right here in Ohio. So far this year, we've lost one hundred and nineteen brave men and women, brave men and women in the line of duty, including two from Ohio. Our officers here at Dublin Police Department were impacted both professionally and personally by several of these tragedies. At this time, I'd like to welcome two of our dedicated officers, Officer Amber McCloskey and Officer Jared Dobney, to offer any reflection or comments that they have in accepting this humbling proclamation with me. Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. Did everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. I'm calling in from West Virginia, so sometimes we have spotty reception here. First and foremost, I just jotted down a few thoughts that I wanted to say to all of you. Thank you to Dublin City Council, our community, and Light Ohio Blue for regarding this week as Police Week. It's not only a week of appreciation, but a week of remembrance. Men and women leave their homes every day to protect and serve our communities, and some of these individuals tragically never return home. In my second police academy, I had a lieutenant who told our class that the most courageous thing we would ever do would be to take our oath on graduation day. He said everything that happens after that moment is just our duty. Dublin Police Department and departments across the country will continue to answer the call for service in order to keep our community safe, knowing the inherent risks that accompany the job. Officer Dobney and I are honored and humbled to accept this proclamation as we continue to serve the city of Dublin and those who have made the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Can everybody hear me okay? All right, I just wanted to say thank you as well for this proclamation, speaking both personally and professionally. It's humbling and it's honoring to know that the men and women that we've served with who have died in the line of duty are going to be remembered, and it's humbling and good to know that should the worst befall one of us, we as colleagues and our families will be well taken care of and well remembered. So it's very humbling, and again, I just deeply appreciate and sincerely thank you for making this proclamation.
Officer McCloskey and Officer Dobney, thank you for your service to this community. Lieutenant Tabernak, thanks for leading such a wonderful group of individuals. We really are truly grateful in this community for sacrificial work that you do. So not that a blue light can really signify how grateful we are, but we're going to give it all we got.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on this evening's agenda, and I will check in with Lindsay to see if we've received any through the clerk's office or through CPI.
Nothing so far, ma'am.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, the consent agenda consists of the minutes of the April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one regular meeting. Is there a request to remove anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Ambrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to second reading, public hearing ordinances, ordinance twenty dash twenty-one.
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to Collision Right LLC to induce it to lease a facility to retain and expand its corporate headquarters and its associated operations and workforce all within the city, and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement.
Great, thank you. And our staff report will be from Sarah O'Malley. There's Sarah. Welcome. And I saw that there was additional reading material in our packet, but I'm sure that you will bring over that as well. So welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council. I have no updates since first reading, although I did address Vice Mayor DeRosa's questions in the updated memo to this ordinance. So if there are additional questions or any follow-up questions to this new information, I'm happy to answer the answer those this evening. In addition, it is our pleasure to have Dublin resident, shareholder, and vice president of Human Resources at Collision Right Denise Kessner on the call with us this evening to help share their success story and help answer any additional questions that you may have. So with that, we're here and we're willing to help if you have questions.
Great, thank you, Denise. Did you want to make any comments? You're on mute, so we would love to hear you.
Sorry.
There you go.
Comment of the century. Yes, thank you so much. We have, Collision Right is the the parent company to eleven different brands, two of which may sound familiar to central Ohio residents. We purchased Three C Auto Body and Rice Auto Body, and in addition to that, own nine additional companies throughout the Midwest. And as a resident of Dublin for the past twenty-five years, raising children in this community, I had a strong desire for the corporate headquarters to be here in Dublin. And additionally, I serve on the Welcome Warehouse Board with Liz Crawford, and wanted Crawford wanting to help us find a piece of real estate in which to house our corporate headquarters. So we've looked at a number of different options, from Upper Arlington, where our CEO is headquartered, to Dublin Bridge Park, and we very much would like to be a part of the Bridge Park community, the excitement, the ability to attract and retain talent, and just being more of an engaged partner within this community is a strong desire of mine. So we hope to continue to build out our company here in the Dublin area.
Great, thanks, Denise. And thanks for all you've done in the community. I know you've been a been active in a lot of things, so appreciate all that. Lindsay, I want to check in with you to see if we've received any public comment regarding this ordinance.
We have not.
Great, thank you for that. Council questions and discussion?
Yes, Denise, thanks for joining us tonight. You sort of answered my question. I was kind of trying to figure out what exactly it is that you do, but it looks like you are what I'd call an aggregator. You're you're buying up these, not really mom and pop auto body shops, but but offering them economies of scale, infrastructure, that kind of thing that they may not have. Okay. Very interesting. I'm curious if what where you see, and maybe you're not the right person to answer the question, and this is a little bit off topic, but where you see auto body heading in fifteen, twenty years with self-driving cars? Is that going to put you out of business?
Oh, it very well could, but I still think there are going to be accidents to be had, and still there's going to be collisions. So I don't think anything is going to be perfect, and I think there still will be a need for repairs to be made to these self-driving cars. So it is something that we have taken a look at, and I think it's amazing to look at the technology that is involved in just repairing a simple bumper on a BMW with the amount of sensors. You know, they are more I more of an IT professional than they necessarily are tradesmen sometimes. So I think we're going to continue to see that evolutionize, but I still think we're going to see accidents from time to time.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Yeah, Kathy?
I just wanted to say thanks very much, Sarah, for updating that, and thank you so much, Denise. Strong growth, so excited to have you. Thanks very much.
And thanks, Denise, for bringing your company home. Much appreciated. Thank you.
It was a it was a battle between Powell and Upper Arlington and Dublin, but leave it to Human Resources to win.
Thank you.
In short comments. Okay, if there's nothing further, Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Mayor Ambrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Great, thanks all. Okay, introduction, first reading, public hearing, ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-one.
Maintaining the existing ward boundaries of the city of Dublin as required by Article nine point zero four of the revised charter.
In honor of Christina not being here this evening, I will introduce it. And we have a staff report from Homer Rogers.
Good evening, members of council. Before you use ordinance twenty-one twenty-one, maintaining the existing ward division and boundaries of the city of Dublin. Section nine point zero four of the city charter requires a review of the division of the wards and associated boundaries every ten years. During the April fifth council workshop, this topic was discussed, and it was determined that a status quo ordinance should be advanced in order to meet the July first, twenty-twenty-one deadline for issuing a renewed ordinance due to the delay in receiving the results of the twenty-twenty U.S. Census. To date, the only U.S. Census data that has been released is to the state level. Once the remainder of the twenty-twenty Census data is released, this ordinance requires staff to conduct a review and make recommendations as soon as practicable. That release is expected by September of this year. Again, this ordinance before each night maintains the current ward divisions and boundaries with some minor administrative exceptions, reflecting a few address corrections and the physical changes to the road network which have occurred since 2010. Subject to your questions, staff recommends approval at the next city council meeting on May twenty-fourth.
Great, thank you, Homer. Lindsay, have we received any public comment on this ordinance?
We have not.
Okay, thank you. Council questions, discussion?
Homer, I hope, did we take in consideration those street adjustments we discussed at the last meeting?
It's our intent to incorporate those with the review that we do when we get the rest of the census data.
Okay.
I think probably our original charter did not contemplate a pandemic and an inability to conduct a census in a timely fashion. So we'll look forward to making sure that we do the right things and do make the adjustments with the results of the census as soon as those results are made available to us, but we don't want to disrupt the upcoming November election in that process. So thanks for your work on that, Homer. Certainly do appreciate it. This will be, have a second reading public hearing on May the twenty-fourth. Okay, brings us to introduction, public hearing votes on resolution, resolution twenty-six dash twenty-one.
Accepting the lowest and best bid with twenty-twenty-one shared use path and parking lot maintenance programs.
Okay, I will introduce this one as well, and Paul Hammer Smith has magically appeared on my screen to deliver the staff report.
Good evening, members of council. On April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, five bids were received publicly open and read by engineering staff for the twenty-twenty-one shared use path and parking lot maintenance programs. This project provides maintenance in various locations on the shared use path network and in several city parking lots. The map attached to the staff report in your packet provides the general locations for this work. Temporary closures will take place during the sealing, milling, and paving of the shared use paths and parking lots. Warning signs and barricades will be posted immediately in advance of the closure and for the shared use paths at the cross, closest legal crosswalk indicating the closure ahead and providing a detour route around the work zone. The typical communication methods will be used to convey construction information with the residents and impacted property owners throughout the duration of this work. Construction of this project is to commence in early June, and the completion date is August sixth. The engineer's estimate for these programs is three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. The combined budgeted funds for the shared use path and parking lot maintenance programs in the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five capital improvements program are four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. B and B Ceiling LLC submitted the lowest and best bid of two hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty cents. Staff has thoroughly reviewed the B and B Ceiling bid. This contractor has not previously performed work for the city of Dublin, therefore staff made inquiries with references of B and B Ceiling and received positive feedback regarding their work. Staff recommends council approval of resolution twenty-six dash twenty-one, accepting as lowest and best a bid of B and B Ceiling in the amount of two hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty cents, and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with B and B Ceiling for this project. I'll be glad to answer any questions council might have about this resolution.
Great, thanks, Paul. Lindsay, have we received any public comment on this legislation?
No, we have not.
Ma'am. A council questions, discussion?
Chris, I had a quick question for Paul. Paul, because this is significantly less than the budget, was there additional work that in the twenty-twenty-two calendar that staff feels be appropriate to bring forward or not at this time?
We hadn't evaluated that, but we can take a look at that. Probably the work would be more along the lines of shared use path versus parking lots, but we can inquire with Bob Taylor, our asset management professional on staff.
It just might be, or might create an opportunity where residents, and I know they reach out to you when there's issues and opportunities, because there are some in the budget potentially to do that. So that's great. Thank you, Paul.
Understood. Good point. You're welcome.
Any other questions for Paul? Paul, I had just one. So the average condition score was below the goal of seventy at sixty-seven point one. Coming into next year, after it looks like there's a significant amount of work done this year, so next year's, you would expect us to be well above our goal of seventy in our scoring for asphalt parking lots?
I would hope so. A lot of that really depends on kind of what a year brings and the sort of winter that we have. Sometimes we see status quo on condition or a little bit of degradation, and sometimes we see significant degradation. So assuming that we don't see significant degradation, I think you would be correct in that assessment.
Thank you. Okay, if there is nothing further, Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Resolution twenty-seven dash twenty-one.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into contract modifications with Dublin Development Company LLC and Columbus Fiber Net LLC related to the multi-duct underground conduit and related facilities commonly known as Dublin.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you, Andy. Okay, so our staff report's going to be done other than our own general. You, McDaniel, welcome.
Well, good evening, members of council. The Dublining project originated as a series of contracts between the city of Dublin and official company back in nineteen ninety-eight. As you could imagine, those were expanded upon and modified over the years. And just as a reminder, Dublin consists of a multi-conduit system owned and operated by an official company with one conduit of the system dedicated for use by the city of Dublin. The city populated its conduit in the Dublining system with fiber optics, and the city has used fiber optics over the years for institutional public purposes, also for economic development, attraction, retention, expansion, and has conducted dark fiber leasing, creating revenue to the city. The city's owns approximately twenty-five miles of fiber optics within the city of Dublin and about a hundred or so miles of fiber optics outside the city of Dublin. The official company has contractually managed and maintained the city's fiber optics since their inception. Both official company and the city of Dublin desire to bring the agreements up to date. The resolution twenty-seven twenty-one with its two associated agreements, if passed by council, will achieve this needed update. The two agreements accompanying this resolution do the following, and I'll just quickly highlight the key components of that. One proposes to restructure conduit pricing to three phases instead of potentially seven phases. The second thing it does is renew the maintenance agreement at the same cost as the original agreement, plus a CPI or cost of living adjustment that had not been previously provided in the previous years. The third thing it does, it adds language that will reimburse the official company for its actual cost of providing locate services for laterals that serve Dublin schools. Just to keep in mind, those laterals are pretty long. They're not just a lateral from the street into the building. Some of those laterals, like at Old Sawmill Elementary, will go from Sawmill Road all the way up to the elementary school, and the city owns fiber in addition to the school's fiber within that. So it's really important that the city locate that and maintain that as part of its overall system. The fourth thing is that official will provide consistent maintenance and management of the Dublin-owned conduit system, generally in and around Bridge Park. The conduit also is one of the three pricing phases that's referenced, that I referenced earlier as one of the other adjustments. Staff recommends council pass resolution twenty-seven twenty-one and its associated agreements. I'll be happy to answer any questions they have. I think I also have Jennifer Radler, obviously is available, and also special legal counsel Greg Dunn should be available as well, who's worked with me on Dublin matters since we started this back in the late nineties.
Great, thank you, sir. Okay, Lindsay, have we received any public comment relative to this legislation?
We have not, ma'am.
Thank you. Council questions, discussion? Yes, Kathy?
More of a comment. Thank you very much, Dana. I, as we go forward, this is, this is as important as the infrastructure we just talked about, with shared use paths and roads, et cetera, so forth. One of the things that might be interesting in, as part of one of our future workshop, is to get an, sort of an update on what's happening with this type of work, not just with Dublin, but around in the region, because as your note explains, there's fiber in Dublin, there's fiber outside of Dublin that are all important, and I personally would appreciate an opportunity to have a chance to talk about that. I think it's so vitally important and so much appreciate your continued leadership and work on this very important resource. So, thank you.
That'd be a great work session topic, I would imagine, maybe, you know, or if you had another time you would want to.
And include it with others, but I just, again, an update, I just, because so many of the strategic plans we have, I think it would be very useful. So thank you, staff, for your work on this. I appreciate it.
Agreed, yeah. Dana, I have a question. So if they're going to do inspection and maintenance on these, what does that maintenance consist of? If there would be damage or crushed line or settling that would cause some separation, you know, are there subsequent costs associated with the inspections that they do back to the city, or is this a comprehensive?
Maintenance can go into things like locate services, which is really critical. Of course, the better they locate, the less likely there'll be damage. Obviously, the system is, has been out there since the early two thousands, so age is starting to affect and will affect the system over time, particularly when you have pipes underground. There'll be, you know, occasionally there'll be a dig in if they weren't, if someone didn't call in for a locate and it wasn't caught in time. That happens very rarely, though. Sometimes you'll have a partial collapse of the system, but there's, the duct system is set up so it has a maintenance duct, and there's some capacity in there that helps them to work around that pretty quickly. Sometimes the hand holes, which are manholes, but much more shallow, will need work or pumping out or something like that. Splicing, when it comes to splicing in the ninety-six fiber, that's typically done separately and an additional cost, and that's one of the reasons we really have stayed with official all these years is because since its inception, they don't, they don't just manage the city's fiber optic system in terms of splicing and who's on what fiber, but also the other conduits in the bank system. So it's important that, you know, consistency and oversight management of that is really important. So that's why we've stayed with them all these years, and I really want to thank official company, frankly, for, if you think about that, they've been doing that maintenance agreement at the same cost per year since the early two thousands. And there's not been a cost of living increase or anything on that. So for the first time, they've asked for a cost of living increase, which I think is pretty reasonable to ask for after all this time. So it really covers a multitude of things, but the extent to which they can be more proactive in the maintenance, the less impact you have on any system. So that's where we put a lot of our focus.
Dana, does Oops find that particular system when they're out? Does it have metal running through it so that they can detect it, or?
Now, the official company provides the locates for what's called, well, what is the Dublink, which is within the Columbus Fiber Net? So there's official company, is an umbrella company, have Columbus Fiber Net, which owns the ring of conduit throughout central Ohio, of which we are a part, and then they also have the Dublink LLC subsidiary. And so they provide all the locate on their own system throughout the entire system and do include laterals. The city of Dublin owns several laterals into private buildings, which has assisted us with our hundred gig Dublin transport system and the like, as well as some of the laterals that were put in in support of the economic development agreement. So they know the ins and outs of those laterals and those buildings and how to locate them. So there's all kinds of methods by which they do that. But generally, what you're speaking of, it's the same kind of approach that Oops uses when they locate.
Yeah, I'm just worried about some digger would, without knowing officials in charge of this, would cut into this thing, and then you have to.
They're on the Oops call list, so they're part of that. So they, they get notified just like, you know, the electric company, the gas company, the city with its utilities and so forth.
Okay.
John, I have been on site when these have been encountered before, and they do have a warning tape at, I think, eighteen inches, or maybe it's twenty-four inches. There's a warning tape that has a metallic thread through it. That's how they locate it. And but I think there's maybe two levels of warning tape. I think maybe the first one's yellow. I think the second one might be red. But that is all in the trenches as well.
Yeah, I do, I, I'm sorry, I didn't acknowledge that. They, I definitely know that they do the warning tape. And remember, this was built, most of it was all built twenty years ago, but they were doing that even back then.
Yeah, hey, thanks, Dana, because I was there for that nineteen ninety-eight vote when you decided to do this, and that was cutting edge, and I think it was like a million dollars or something, is all we put into it. I can't remember the amount, but it ended up being a giant, great resource for our community and really advances ahead of a lot of other communities. So again, thanks to your efforts.
I briefed other communities on this, pretty much around the world, and the last analysis I did, which has been several years ago, we spent, the city spent probably about seven million on this total. The original bill was three point two million. And then over time, you put more into it, but the return on investment I can show is oh, well over forty million dollars in return on investment.
Thanks, Dana. Any other questions, comments from council? Okay. I saw that Greg Dunn, Greg, did you have something you wanted to add, or were you just support staff?
Yeah, I'm just support staff on this, but this has been a wonderful project. It's, it's great, because I never thought I'd see it, you know, come up for renewal or of a lot of the contracts, but there it is.
Great, appreciate you and all your work on that. Thanks. Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to the other portion of our agenda this evening for the Memorial Tournament Benefit Concert alcohol waiver request. I think Allison, oh, she is. Great, well, you have our staff report this evening, so please take it away.
Good evening, members of council. Tonight, I have a request from the Memorial Tournament to ask to serve alcohol on city property, which specifically, and this is the streets in Bridge Park, for their benefit concert that they're presenting along with Crawford Hoying. This is sort of a combination of the benefit concert they normally would do downtown, and then also the ForFest event that's happened. Obviously, because of some of the COVID restrictions, they're changing what they're doing, so they're doing a smaller, limited concert, and we have been, they've included us on all their calls with Franklin County Public Health, so we've kind of been along with them to see, you know, the recommendations, and they're following all the recommendations of Franklin County. So we're pretty happy with that. We've had our event meeting with them, so we're confident that we can do this event in a safe way. Both our police have been involved and also with the health department, so we're recommending the approval of this request for serving alcohol for that party.
Great, thanks, Allison. I do want to check in with Lindsay just to verify that if we've received any public comment relative to this request?
No, we have not, ma'am.
Great, thank you. Okay, well, council, any thoughts, questions? Hearing none, I will make a motion to approve the alcohol waiver request. Is there a second?
A second.
Sandy, Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, and next we have a post-road interchange aesthetics, and I believe Paul's going to join us again with our staff report for this.
Yes, members of council. And first, I'm going to ask Maria if I can share my screen, because we realized today that Figure One was not in your staff report. I think somehow in the process of transfer, it, the figure itself got lost. I was going to have that up on the screen while I gave you some comments.
Hello, Paul. I believe I passed that on to you. See if you can share now.
Okay. All right, you should be able to see that now, council. So, members of council, the city of Dublin is working cooperatively with project partners at the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, and Union County to improve the interchange at US 33, State Route 161, and Post Road. This project is located at the existing 33-161 Post Road Interchange, providing access to the Ohio State University Wexner Medical Center outpatient care facility currently under construction along the north side of University Boulevard. The detailed design, environmental studies, and right-of-way acquisition are on schedule to be completed in 2021. The current project schedule requires the final plan package to be submitted to ODOT in early October of this year. The project is anticipated to be bid in February 2022, with an award in mid-March and construction to start in May. In order to meet this schedule, the plans must be finalized no later than this coming August. Work included in this project consists of the construction of two new loop ramps that will eliminate existing left-turn conflicts to enter the US 33 ramps. A multi-lane roundabout at the West Ramp Terminal and an expanded traffic signal at the East Ramp Terminal will keep vehicles moving efficiently. The design also includes landscaping and a shared-use path on the south side of State Route 161. Fiber connectivity will support the testing of connected and autonomous vehicle operations and other technology initiatives in the corridor. The proposed overall landscape plan for the interchange creates a low-maintenance, semi-annual, mowed grassland aesthetic similar to the Muirfield Drive medians just south of the roundabout at Bran Road. Additionally, some accent landscape beds for seasonal interest and a regularly mowed lawn treatment are near the travel lanes. In the infield of the interchange, trees are arranged in a hierarchy of arcs and rows that tie the landscape to the Ohio University campus's very distinctive architectural rows of trees celebrating the West Innovation District. Hardscape elements are also included in the landscape plan with curved bands of cobblestone pavers. These bands will also function as drainage swales within the loop ramps in the northwest and southwest quadrants. The design of the bridges represents the rural character of Union County, connecting the medical and technology fields in Dublin, while maintaining the traditional Dublin bridge aesthetics through the design, colors, and textures used. The decorative railing on the bridge, along with the white concrete bands, highlight the arch of the bridge. This is a consistent theme of Dublin aesthetics used on various elements, including bridges, culverts, and tunnels. Dublin bridges where you can find an arch feature include the Avery Muirfield Drive and Emerald Parkway bridges over US 33, and the Emerald Parkway and State Route 161 bridges over the Scioto River. The white bands extend to the caps of the retaining walls clad in real stone, which create levels transitioning to the surrounding area. Planting vent will be supported between the levels. The use of stone is planned on the center bridge piers and above the walls, providing aesthetic and architectural interest. It is also consistent throughout Dublin and many elements such as walls, retaining walls, tunnels, and bridges. Union County is cooperatively engaged in the overall project. Additionally, ODOT and Union County are supportive of the aesthetic package. Staff will continue coordinating with the project partners to ensure these aesthetic elements are included in this interchange improvement. This aesthetic information for the US 33 State Route 161 Post Road Interchange is provided for information. Staff recommend city council refer this matter to the Public Services Committee for review and discussion about the plantings and hardscape elements of the interchange landscape package. I will be glad to answer any questions council might have about the aesthetic package. And also with me this evening are Jeannie Willis, Deputy Director of Transportation and Mobility, and Sean Kretzky, our landscape architect on staff.
Great, thanks, Paul.
You're welcome.
Lindsay, have we received any public comment on this topic?
We have not.
Great, appreciate that. Questions, comments from council?
Paul, I had sort of two questions, if I could, please. The first, I understand there was extensive resident involvement in the design a few years ago. A question, am I correct in that, and is much changed from that? And my second question is, could you highlight on here where the bike path is? Because I think that's going to be a very nice addition to the ability to make some connectivity. So, thank you, Paul.
You're welcome. And I'll ask Jeannie or Sean to add anything to my comments. But originally, when this interchange project started back in 2005 and 2006 with the original design, yes, there was, you know, through that process, much public involvement and input at that time with the then landscape plan, which has actually changed a great deal. The bridge aesthetics itself are really very similar to what was done at that time. And that was presented to the public. And, you know, at that time, the public was supportive of that design. And then just recently, last August, there was a virtual public meeting conducted, you know, for this project. And the landscape plan, again, and the bridge aesthetics were presented to the public. And once again, I believe, we received favorable comments regarding that. But Jeannie, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, thank you. So, the landscaping package was reviewed back in the beginning stages of the design of this project. The design has actually been simplified a little bit in terms of the planting materials chosen with being more native to the area and an easier maintenance package. But it is a very similar theme across the entire interchange. And then Kathy, the red line that is here on the south side of the interchange, that is the shared-use path. That's why that's highlighted.
I thought that. That's great. I think that's going to be a wonderful addition.
Absolutely. Yeah, the other nice thing is that we have heightened awareness crossings here on both of the ramp crossings. So, we will provide hawk signals, which will actually stop traffic for pedestrians to cross. So, it'll be a very pedestrian-friendly environment. So, we are very excited about that. And ODOT was very supportive of those features.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Okay, anything else from council? Hey, Paul, I have two quick questions. When you say the stone will be real stone, you mean real natural stone, not cultured stone, correct?
That is correct.
And then the cobblestone material, is that intended to be limestone material or granite? Or what will those cobbles be proposed to be?
I don't have the answers. I'll ask Sean if he has.
It's a river stone?
It's a river, okay.
Like a wash stone rounds?
Yeah.
Okay, then I will make a motion to refer this topic to the Public Services Committee. Is there a second?
A second.
Thanks, Andy. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Emros Grooms?
Yes.
And Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Jenny. Jenny, okay, staff comments. I believe City Manager McDaniel has a for us and maybe some others. Welcome.
I do. Good evening again. I have an update, and I'm going to hand it over to the chief for an update, then it will come back to me. And then I got two comments, and then we'll move on. But I'm just really proud to give an update real quick on the Community Task Force. As city council is aware, you established the Community Task Force in order to facilitate discussion and strategic planning to encourage diversity, equity, inclusion throughout the city's practices, but also the community at large. So, after the past, over the past eight months, the Community Task Force has made significant strides in evaluating the needs of the community and identifying areas of opportunity. The task force leadership chair, Kofi Mponza, and vice chair Bridget Marié have provided you an update on the task force's progress. It was in your packet in preparation for this meeting. I want to thank all the task force members, the chair and vice chair, for the passion and leadership on this topic. Per the report, they're making great progress, while pandemic conditions have certainly been frustrating to all of us and also to the task force. It's somewhat limited, the amount of engagement that they can do with the general public. But they've all done a great job of bringing forward their own thoughts, concerns, questions, and ideas, as well as those of the community they represent. And they're well on their way to providing a set of recommendations to council, which they intend to advance to you for consideration at your August 15th meeting, if all continues to go well. As the report alludes to, they've identified and are modeling a framework for a plan of recommendations or aspirational goals for you to consider. They have established subcommittees on various key areas of interest and are developing aspirational goals with both action items and measures. The staffs continue to update the task force on our own efforts relative to a DEI strategic plan for the city as an organization. And that will also be included in their proposed recommendation as well. And last, they are intending to discuss, as they go forward, the notion of a community advisory committee that might continue to serve the city with the implementation of their adopted recommendations going forward. Kofi Mponza, chair, cannot be with us this evening, but I'm pleased to let you know that Vice Chair Bridget Marié is with us. And if you have any questions or comments of her, that would be great while she's here. And I'm also happy to help assist with any questions that I might be helpful with. So, with that, I thank you for your time and maybe give you a chance to ask any questions or make any comments before we hand it on to the chief for his update.
Council have questions? I do know how much we appreciate the work that they're doing and really appreciate the leadership of Kofi and Bridget. And so, certainly is a labor, and I appreciate them doing it with love, so.
So, I don't know, Bridget has anything she wants to add or not, since she attended the meeting. That's all right, Mayor. Bridget, are you on? Is there anything you would like to add?
Hi, I just want to say that it's really an honor to be on the task force. And I feel that I've met all these folks for the first time, all virtually, of course, but there's a lot of dedicated people working on the topics. And we have great staff support. So, I'm really excited about what's forming. And hopefully, city council will like it as well.
Well, again, Bridget, thanks. And please pass our thanks on to the balance of your committee for their dedication and their work on this. It certainly is appreciated by this body, I know for sure.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us tonight as well.
Sure.
Okay, Dana, you want to move on to chief?
Yes.
Thank you, Dana. Good evening, members of council. First, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank, as I've done in every direction and opportunity possible, thank the members of city council and the city manager for their commitment to furthering ongoing conversations in our community about diversity, equity, and inclusion through the enactment of the Community Task Force and the Chief's Advisory Committee. Also, want to thank the 10 appointed members of our advisory committee for their commitment and their openness and their partnership as we continue to have ongoing crucial conversations about safety in our community and expectations our community have of their police department and their public safety services, certainly. So, I want to thank those members of our advisory committee, Esau Soji, who serves on both the advisory committee and the Community Task Force, Cameron Justice, Courtney Ingram, Stella Bialba, Susan Ortega, Shri Gadam, Imran Malik, and Yan Ling Yin. And I also wanted to make sure I acknowledge our chairs, Dwayne Maynard and Ashmary Hawk, for their work and effort in providing the updated memo for council as well. So, we have had eight meetings with our advisory committee, or the chief's advisory committee so far. Our initial discussions really sat down and had a lot of intentional, granular discussion about our school officer resource program. And that was a conversation that really sort of set the structure for how we are going to continue to talk about programs, policies, philosophy, and culture of the police department as we go forward. And they have provided us, as members of the community, or this chief's advisory committee, and certainly representative of communities throughout Dublin, policies and questions and concerns that they have heard. And they have themselves about how we provide public safety services here in Dublin. And those topics moving forward will include a long discussion about our response to resistance or use of force policy, rendering aid in the aftermath of a response to resistance incident, officer-involved critical incident response policy, body worn cameras, and response to civil disturbances or crowd control policy. So, those are the policies they've asked us to bring forward. And as we did with our school resource officer discussion, we provided policy and information to inform the discussion. We have also brought members of our organization to answer questions for members of the advisory committee during those meetings as well. And what we're hopeful to have is some feedback and reflection on our policies currently to make sure that we're meeting expectations of the public, but also some information for us to consider as we are always looking to improve our services to make sure we're engaged, not just in past practices, but the best practices of our industry. So, we are very grateful for their partnership as we continue to have those discussions. The other portion of the meetings that has naturally sort of progressed are the discussions we have each and every meeting on current events and those events that have occurred either in the central Ohio area or across the nation that help inform the discussions that are happening right now about policing services and certainly inform the discussions we're having with our community members about expectations they have for us and what we do currently here at the police department. And I just wanted to share from our chair, Dwayne Maynard, just a correspondence he sent me last week to make sure I pass along to members of council. What he wanted to offer is that the CAC sees itself as playing a meaningful role in helping the department build bridges of trust and connectivity with all members of diverse populations which exist in Dublin now and in the future. And importantly, from the chief's advisory committee's perspective, they are focused on how we build connectivity, but also knowing as the city continues to grow and evolve over a time, my belief is policing service has to continue to grow as well so that we are responsive to safety issues in Dublin, but also projecting forward to make sure that we are looking for problems that might present ahead and solving those collectively with the community as we go. So, I just want, thank you again for allowing me a few minutes to update members of council on the progress of the advisory committee and look forward to coming back and sharing information in the future as well.
Great, thanks, chief. Any comments, questions from council at all? Certainly do appreciate those comments from Judge Maynard, so kind of him to chime in on that. So, okay. And chief, I also want to thank you for the many individual residents that you've been reaching out to, that have contacted city council and wanted to inquire. And really appreciate your commitment to the transparency and commitment to being engaged, whether you're on the police advisory committee or not, that really go the extra mile to make sure that everyone's voice is heard. So, appreciate what you do there.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, I think we're going to go back to you now, Dana. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank the chief as well as his leadership team and all the police department for their embracing this advisory committee and really working hard with them. And I just, I want to thank the chief here publicly for his leadership on that. It's been terrific. So, thanks, Justin, for what you're doing. So, need a little bit of guidance here from council. The city has an opportunity to conduct a visioning process with certain landowners and the Metro Center Owners Association for a section of France Road, Frontage, and portions of Metro Center, generally along France Road again, but between Metro Place North and Metro Place South. This process would really enable us to lean forward a bit on a more micro scale regarding the corporate area plan and to try to lean forward on maybe some visioning about that specific area while we have some cooperative landowners there that are interested in doing that. In discussing this with staff, really thought it would be a great opportunity to do this micro-visioning process, which could also feed in towards the 2035 Framework Plan. But we would like to do this in a way that would be inclusive of a couple council members. If a couple of you could give us some, as if we don't ask you for enough time as it is, but ask you for a little bit more time to participate in this sort of a visioning process. Again, we would have some landowners there involved, the Metro Center Owners Association. We would look for a Planning and Zoning Commission rep as well. Staff will be involved. We're going to use planning next to be the facilitator of this and help staff, you know, with the keeping of notes and jotting down visionary-type things. But we'll reach out to other resources as well to try to grab, you know, what's trending, what kind of trends are going on and some input, you know, on those sort of visionary and evolving trends that are happening. So, the bottom line is, Mayor, just like to ask if number one, council would be interested in participating, if there might be a couple members that would like to volunteer to do that.
Great, thanks, Dana. I do think there were, I did hear from Christina, and she had some interest, if that was, if that worked out as well. And I don't know if there are others that have interests as well, maybe.
You know what? I'd be interested in that, really. Since it's a visioning process for the head of the community development. for the head, the head of the Community Development Committee should be involved and maybe even planning and zoning, maybe Jane should be involved too. I don't know.
Any other interest?
Well, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to be a crowd here, but I actually, my office is in that area, so I I kind of have a vested interest. I don't know whether that's a good or or a bad thing, whether that makes me conflicted. The list that Megan had sent out in her email over the weekend, she had listed a number of different commissions that would by default put a number of us on this in this group. And I'm on, I think, three of those. So again, I don't want to be a crowd, but if you're looking for another body, I'd be happy to participate.
Okay, was there anyone else that was interested? Maybe we could, maybe Dana, you could circulate an email to that effect and and we could settle on it that way. There was others that might be interested as well.
Okay. Well, obviously, we need to keep this at three or less, so I'd appreciate that there's interest. That's great. I know y'all get the overtime out of you here as much as we can. Thanks. Thanks for your willingness willingness to to volunteer for these things. We appreciate it.
Yeah, if you if you could do an email and circle back, I I know Christina was had some interest and was willing, but if there were others that really wanted to participate, you know, that that might change things a little bit too, so.
Yeah, Dana, and the fact that we're not all here tonight, that might be an easier way to do that because I know, I think everybody's quite excited about that opportunity. So I think that'd be great. Thanks.
That sounds great. Well, I do appreciate your willingness to participate. Thank you for that. Last thing I have and I'll hand it back over is I just want to lift up, in addition to honoring our police officers this week, I also want to lift up that this week, May 9th through the 15th is Economic Development Week. And then next week, May 16th through the 22nd is National Public Works Week. So in recognition of the many professionals we have on staff who work in these career fields, I just want to recognize each of them for their dedicated service to their profession and also their service to our community. So keep those in mind as well and as we go over the next couple of weeks. So unless you have any questions to me, that's all I had for this evening.
Appreciate it, General. Yeah, it's a busy couple of weeks here. We have a lot of, a lot of good folks to recognize. So thanks for highlighting those as well. Okay, this will take us to committee reports. I will just address those that the members are here this evening. The Admin Committee, Kathy?
Yes, thank you very much. I have a bit of a report. We met on May the 4th. Several topics. We received an update from staff on our diversity, equity, and inclusion training options. As you recalled, we asked staff if they would please go explore what those options might be for Council and for our boards and commissions. So they they did that and brought back some ideas that certainly reflect what they have learned from their work with staff, but also tailored to what boards and commissions and council would be interested in. So we will bring back a recommendation at our next meeting from staff with a specific recommendation on what that could look like as well as timing and funding. So we'll bring that back next time. We also spent some time in the committee. As you recall, we've been talking about council engagement and communication over the last few months and staff provided us with the ongoing update on on that, including Councilmember Fox had asked about Talk to Us platform in our previous council meeting. So we had some conversations about that. As you know, staff does a lot of exploration of new tools because with communication and engagement, they change fast. So staff will be compiling some of those and agree that maybe one of the most effective way to do is to spend some one-on-one time with each of the council members asking their opinions and thoughts and a few things. So look for them to reach out and do that. It'll probably be after our next meeting, but you'll see that as well. We had a busy meeting. The other thing that we talked about, staff has done some great work on helping us advance the engagement and recruiting for boards and commissions. That Council has asked them to look into that. So there have developed a framework, the CPI team, and we spent some time discussing that. So we'll again, we'll continue to advance that and you'll see that as we move forward. And then finally, as as happening in all the committee meetings, we had our second discussion on the Dublin 2035 Plan. Don't really have an update on that, but we will have a workshop in June after all of the other boards, excuse me, other committees have had a chance to to look at that. So busy meeting and many things moving forward. So, thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Kathy. Community Development Committee, John?
Yes, we had a meeting on April 21st and agreed with staff on the approval of the following. Bishop Run Crossing requested $5,000. Riverside Woods requested $5,000. Savonia requested $3,244. Terraza requested 5,000 and Wyandotte Woods requested 5,000. And all these were very reasonable and really beneficial to the overall community, the aesthetics, the entryway features for our community. And so we did agree with staff. So I guess we may need a vote if you agree to support these different neighborhood entities.
Dana, I believe staff is bringing recommendations forward on our next agenda for those to be voted on. Is that correct?
That would be correct, yes, to actually take the vote, yeah.
And that that'll be at our next meeting. Okay, okay. And then, of course, we conducted the Dublin 2035 Big Idea Exercise Program and Historic Task Force Dublin Recommendations Implementations was discussed. Additional information will be coming regarding the SIDS, the facade grant improvement, and whether or not public or private partnerships and/or the creation of a nonprofit entity could assist with the administration of that program. So all those things were discussed. Tune in, we'll find out how they all shake out in the future. Thank you.
Appreciate that, John. Thanks. For Morcy, we have a commission meeting this week, so we'll, I'll have more information in our next meeting. I'll go to Logan Union Champagne County. Andy?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. 33 Corridor Group, Kathy and Andy?
Nope, we'll meet next month. Thanks.
Arts Council, John?
I have a really great art show from a really famous artist. I was shocked about, this is a nationally known artist who has art all over, lives in Florida a lot of the time. So if you love golf and golf is coming up here very shortly in all of our minds, this Ada Garrity Dublin Golfscapes exhibit, which is, by the way, was panned very nicely. I don't know you guys saw it in Sunday's Dispatch. They did a whole feature on Dublin and this particular artist. And the, so if you want to see some great paintings of people golfing that are just well executed, the figure to grounds are perfect, the the relationships, this lady is hugely talented. So I highly would recommend that if you like golf and you like art, try to make an appointment with the Dublin Arts Council and stop in and see this exhibition. Also, the Dublin Arts Council inaugurated the Time Capsules. Thank you, Dana, for showing up and being part of that. So they will be opened on the 50th anniversary of the Dublin Arts Council. And I think it's 33, the year 33. So that all happened Friday and with and it was videoed and I think we'll have the opportunity to see that on Dub TV. Thank you.
Great, thanks, John. Department of Education, Greg?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Know that they were, that some of the the new leadership was having a meeting this evening that we were unable to attend due to this meeting, but hopefully we will have opportunity to meet them in short order. Look forward to that. Veterans Committee, John?
We'll have a Zoom showing if you get the chance on Memorial Day to honor our our heroes and people who served this nation. I think they're going to film portions of it tomorrow at 11 o'clock, so it will be available, I think, on Memorial Day. Thank you.
Okay, Round Screen, I will start with Greg.
I have nothing further. Great meeting.
Thank you, sir. John?
Uh, nothing. Thank you.
Shaded Andy?
I've got a couple things. First off, kudos to the staff that, the directors that joined us for the various 2035 Framework discussions and a lot of the committees. Some really bright ideas, forward-thinking folks. Appreciate your participation and innovative thinking there. And a special shout out to one of our superstars, Doug McCullough, who was featured in Business First this past week.
Thanks, Andy. Kathy?
Just want to share my appreciation and thanks to the Public Works Team and the Economic Development Team and to Chief and his group for continuing to always raise the bar, look at best practices and involve our community in all that they do. We sincerely appreciate that. So thank you.
Great. Well, I I don't have anything to add to all those great thoughts. So with that, if there is nothing more for the good of the order, this might be a new record, but we will stand adjourned. Have a great evening and this time I can mean it because it'll be more than a half hour.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.